I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting?
I have two.
Yes.
I'd like to put on eight A and B. One is a manager's search discussion, which is both beyond here. And B is a summer meeting schedule.
A point of clarification I want to add for meeting minutes. This will be the last select board meeting under the pre-existing COVID-19's governor's order. We have a new executive order that took place in the first of June. The first meeting that we were warned and have under those new protocols will be the village trustees meetings. But every select board meeting going forward will be under those new rules, which will include attendance up to 25 people, at least following social distancing protocols.
That starts next Tuesday. Okay, we need to approve the minutes.
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All of the papers signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Any public comments on items not on the agenda, three minutes per person?
I do, guys.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to address the recent layoff at the town hall.
Okay.
And with full disclosure, Joan is my wife's sister. But that's not the point I'm here for. The point is that I sat in your seats. I was the village president for several terms, as a selectman for several terms. And if the town manager or temporary town manager had pulled some kind of shenanigans like that while I was sitting in your seats, I'd be livid because I understand he didn't tell you. I understand he didn't consult the listener box. Took their only secretary away coming into their busiest part of the season. Without saying how they're going to get through it, without any point in B. To me, that's not town management period. We've got enough turmoil and uproar in the community as it is. And like I said, if I was in your shoes, which I have been, I would not consider that person to be anywhere near in a candidacy for a town manager or actually in the position he's in at the moment. I can go on, but I'll give back my time, basically. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
No, but Katano and other business, I'd like to discuss that.
Okay. Managers' report.
We do dailies. If there's any questions from members of the select board, I'm available to answer them right now. Those daily reports are basically summaries of what I'm doing each day and the result of decisions made or anything like that.
Then I would like to acknowledge Shannon, who has an announcement to make regarding some staff.
Yeah, I just want to huge shout out to Brenda and Pam and Kathleen for all of their hard work for all the COVID activities, keeping the town hall open and moving. They've just really done an amazing job.
We felt it was important to publicly acknowledge you all just because of, it's been hard and things are sideways. You've been asked to do amazing things. Town clerk is on the road now. If you need something notarized, then we're not just in the town hall anymore. We're on the road doing things for people when they need it. Pam, Brenda have gone above and beyond to make sure that the town hall is functioning perfectly. And they amaze me each day with their pride and their efforts.
Usually by common, but that's another sample of Joan has been in the building through the whole COVID. So hasn't, not to acknowledge them, let's just show the. Whatever.
Okay, so it's getting right to the agenda here. Number one.
Katano, can I just interject something here?
Yes.
I mean, I think it's important, some of the items in the manager's report should be made during these meetings because not everybody in the public is getting these managers' reports. So there's, there might be some key things in there that need to be shared with the public.
Moving forward, we could actually ask members of the select board to make note of items that you want me to raise to the public and/or you can introduce those items as questions to me to make sure I'm on the record in a public fashion. As you know, those daily briefs are quite involved, so I'm not sure where I would start. But certainly you all have the perspective of what your constituency wants to hear, and I'll be glad to speak on any particular topic in detail.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, is there something in particular you want to acknowledge too? Because in one day.
Well, I mean, not at this.
In one daily email, there's so much information of things getting done in one day.
I'm not saying all of that should be reported, but for instance, last weekend was green up day. We didn't get a reminder at our meeting before about that.
Well, they weren't sure if they were going to have it, I think, was last I heard. But if there's.
It was the last weekend. But anyway, it's just certain things that normally people are anticipating, little blurbs of news that are important to pay attention to. That, I mean, I think that's missing and I would, I mean, at the moment, I can't point to one particular thing, but I think it's important to keep in mind that these meetings are also to inform the public.
Thank you, Susan. We learned about green up day like the Friday before. I didn't even realize we were going to do it. So we are trying to adjust to a new normal, and that means trying to catch up sometimes after the fact.
All right, that's it.
Well, perhaps next time we'll take notes of things in the daily emails about all the things that are going on that we want to announce to the public.
Maybe in some fashion, we could include them into the website in some form.
There you go.
That way, everybody would have some access.
And then also say I'm here for folks who don't use the website. Okay, item number one is the fire department. Here tonight is the new fire chief of the Rockingham Volunteer Fire Department, Kevin Kingsbury. I think he might want to say a few words, and then I think most everyone knows him and it was about to change, but he's here tonight. Perhaps he'd like to say a few words.
No, he wouldn't.
Come right in the cameras. All the folks at home can see it.
Behind Iton. If you stand behind Iton.
I basically came in and I just introduced myself to the board as the new chief of Rockingham Fire Department. It happened April 7th. By now, most everybody knows about it. You guys have any questions for me?
I'd like to congratulate you on your election or maybe condolences or. But to help a way to get started with that accident on 91 the other day. You were front and center on that one. TV star.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Kevin.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations. How's everything going? Good?
It is going good. Positive attitude around the firehouse.
Excellent.
Turnout for calls has been good.
And you got some new stuff recently, or you're getting some new stuff?
Getting some new stuff if the grant passes, which I don't think we will know until late June or July.
What, you recently got gear, but then the bottles too? What's happening with the bottle?
It's all waiting on the grant.
Okay, well, thanks again, and we're glad you're here and be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number two, recreation department, Brian Studley. Hold on, yep.
So I gave you guys a little write-up, a little memo, what is a potential idea of what to do this summer up here at the rec center? Um. Does everyone have any questions about it or?
Ryan, a question, Peter Golick here. Has Saxon River Rec ever been notified that you're not going to run that this year? You're not going to have any programs out there? The only reason I'm asking is they, they went out, cleaned out the place, mowed it, getting it ready to open up. I don't know if they're aware that there's not going to be lifeguards out there.
I notified Samantha Perry.
Okay. And an ad on Facebook, I think, was looking for volunteers to go help clean up and do all this, this and that. Rental, I guess, it was mentioned too.
Yeah, I think they're just doing their spring cleanup just to make, maintain the ground so it doesn't get overgrown.
Okay, I just, just wanted to make sure that was covered at all.
It was.
You want to give an overview to the folks watching at home what the plan is?
Um, so the plan is right now is to run a daycare, well, day camp Monday through Friday. I'm leaning more towards from eight to three o'clock. But doing this will close it off to the public because if you run a day camp, there can't be any outside people from the public coming in to use anything on the facility when the camp is here. So that is one way, one thing we're going to try to do. It used to be eight to five, but I'm thinking about putting the eight to three, doing a half hour cleanup after the camp is gone, and then open it up to the public from 3:30 to nine o'clock and do 45 minute swims. It'll be opened up to the public after, at 3:30. I will be taking somewhere, the similar stance like Brattleboro. You can call up and request your spot. There's going to be up to 23 spots available because we can have up to 25 people in the pool area at once. So we can have 23 people swimming at the same time. And then after that, 45 minutes, we'll rotate them out, do a 15-minute clean, rotate another 23 people in. And then do that until quarter of nine at night. You get to sign up for one slot a day, so you can't sign up for double slots, just to be fair to open it up for everyone in the public. Then on Saturdays, it will be open only to the public because there'll be no day camp. We would do a adult swim on Saturday from 12 to 12:45, do a quick cleaning after that, and then have it open till six o'clock for the public. We do the same thing, 23 swimmers, two lifeguards on the deck. The playground itself and pavilion up here will have to remain closed. That's what the state wants, but people can use the basketball courts, baseball field and tennis court, pickleball court. You can have up to 25 people now on the basketball court and on the baseball field. And I made a modification on just the tennis court thing, only saying four people are allowed to be on the tennis court, each court. So up to eight people can be over, over there at one time. So that's what the, the state kind of recommends for the, for use of the playground this year.
So that was a state recommendation, the camp. Otherwise, if it were normals, public operations, you would, you would find it much more difficult to limit the 23 capacity, et cetera. Is that why you're going with the camp idea?
Um, I think we're going, you know, go through the camp idea to really utilize because that, that program is very strong over the past few years. And, you know, just to give back to the community of, you know, being able to get their kids into the camp because it's a low budget camp cost. I think it'd be good for the community to be able to have a camp like that. It's the same kind of guidelines we can have, we can basically have about 18 kids. Then we'll have, you know, three to four counselors plus myself and lifeguard. So, I mean, they'll be able to use the swimming pool too at the same time. Kind of like almost added bonus for being part of the camp. So we won't be able to take 18, so then we can still have enough staff around here for cleaning and stuff like that because you can only have 25 total people when the camp is going at the same time. And that is a state on the guidelines that was presented and updated just Friday.
I guess the part that I'm questioning or thinking about is the rest of the kids that aren't in the camp, the kids that go up there two, three, four times a week in the summer to swim. They're, they're going to have to wait till 3:30?
Yeah, I mean, that's why, I mean, this is kind of idea. I mean, we can, we can go with the camp and then we can do the, open up to the public, or we don't have the camp and then we're just open to the public. I'm just trying to utilize as many programs as I can up here, you know, and just, I'm going to stay open and actually, I usually close at eight. So I'm opening up, you know, staying open an extra hour during the summer each week, so an extra five hours. So that's five hours extra for the rec being open during the day. And I'll just try to add and take and, you know, trying to, trying to allow everything to go on at all at the same time. But, you know, it's a give and take. Just kind of more of like a proposal, I guess, and see if you guys really like, would want me to do this or, you know, or we don't want to just keep it open for the public. I really like to have the camp here. It's, you know, I've loused the kids, the, I hire here to, you know, you know, to be working, you know, work and get their applications in, ready for, you know, resumes and stuff like that, so.
Let me ask if I may, because it's been mentioned to me that some local kids apply and they seem to never get a job there. So what, what's going on there? Because it's been mentioned to me in more than one place, so I'm asking you.
What was the question again?
Well, I'm looking for, I'm looking for it to be an emphasis on if we're going to be hiring anybody up there, that we hire local people, local residents from the town of Rockingham.
Yep.
And I've had people mention to me in the years past and recently that that's not always the case. I don't know, so I'm asking you, what's the case?
Majority of the kids that apply are, I I usually hire most, all the kids that apply because I usually, most of the kids I have apply are lifeguards and majority of the lifeguards are residents. You know, I might have one or two from maybe Westminster, but most of them from Saxon River and Rockingham, you know, in Bell Falls Village. So.
Be sitting here on this board that I'd like to see the majority or not all from the town of Rockingham.
Um, that pretty much is, I always look at kids for, in, in the community itself first anyways. I've, I've had a couple of kids from Springfield over the years because I needed kids and those are the only ones that applied. So I've had outside people and then they continue to work for me for many years, but I believe most, all the kids I have working for me are all residents this year.
Okay. Ryan, the, the pool issue there, is that, is that due to the amount of people that can be in the pool at the same time? Is that why you're trying to, you know, controlling the hours?
Yeah, you can only have, so we, the pool and the playground and, you know, basketball courts and stuff like that, you have to abide by the gathering, and he just put that up to 25. So that's 25 people total. So that's why. And the pool is sectioned off, so we can have 25 people in that area. We can have 25 people in the basketball court, so we can still have, you know, 50 people up here at one time. But there's going to be restrictions about, you know, if you need to come use the bathroom, we're only, aren't going to be able to allow so many people in. So basically 25% of what the capacity is, so we're only allowed six people. So if I have a lifeguard meeting and a staff person at the desk, we can have three people in at, or three more people in to use the bathroom or ask questions. And so that's one thing that we have to do and keep an eye on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Susan, any questions? Comments?
Wondering, I know that this, the Saxon River Camp is very popular and obviously that won't be happening this year. Do you think they'll come to the, to Rockingham, to Bell's Falls?
Yeah, we, we moved the camp from Saxon River about three years ago to BF because it was just more, more structured for here. I want to say this, you know, I think the Saxon River Rec, it's a great place, you know, to go out there and, but it's not an ideal place to have a day camp because, you know, the bathroom, there, there's problems with the bathroom. There's no really sinks. It gets vandalized a lot outside, so that's one reason we couldn't, you have to have a sink. You've got to have, you know, a lot of things to be able to do anything out there anyways. So I mean, that's one thing, you know, I was going to talk to Samantha about maybe a focus for the community out there is to really put some running water and protect it because kids do vandalize that a lot outside and break the water foul off their water source out there. But that, and that's about it. I mean, just, you're going to abide by the CDC rules and, you know, it's just not even going to come, come close out there. So there'd be a lot more control out here. It's more structured. We have, you know, kids like it here, the pool's clean. A lot of kids were complaining, parents were complaining about kids swimming in the pond. The kids love it anyways, but I think it's more of the parents didn't like the kids swimming in the pond because you can't treat it anymore like they used to. Used to be able to dye it and use chemicals to kill the algae and all that, but then they put state regulations because that rolls down to the Beaver Dam and kills all the algae and all that down the river, so you can't do that anymore. So it became more of a, you know, a spring pond to swim in and people have gravitated away from that last few years.
Okay, thanks.
So right now, this is just a, this is just an idea, like when, if you send out this presentation, you, you expect it'll fill up. I, I just keep going back to the kids who either couldn't commit to the camp, perhaps couldn't afford it, how they would be able to swim during the middle of the day like many of them do.
That's why it's, you know, the camp used to go to five o'clock and that's why I dial the back to three o'clock. So then the camp would go from eight to three. So then, you know, our busiest time usually here is, you know, 1:30 to three o'clock. So I think, you know, and we usually closed it up at, what do we, we closed it up at five o'clock usually to have another adult swim. Because you used to have adult swim from 12 to one and then from five to six. But now we're going to, you know, have that swim start at 3:30 and go right till, you know, quarter of nine. So, I mean, it's still, it's not right, you know, right at one o'clock, you know, middle of the day, but it's, you know, it's a couple of hours, a little bit different. You know, and that's, I mean, that's our peak time is, you know, one to five really up here for swimming.
Anything else? And Well Street, what's the status with that one? Just the playground?
Just the playground, yeah. It's, it's getting used well ever since they put the playground in a couple of years ago. A lot more people using it, so.
It closed?
Yeah, it's open. It's been open, just, it has the guidelines on the entrance ways, you know, just the, you know, maintain your six feet distance and it's, don't use the playground structure, but people are using it. Same thing up here, the, the playground up here is closed, but people are still using it. I, you know, just tell people it's closing, tell them they, they can't use it, but.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Yep.
Good luck.
Thank you.
On number three, highway department, Everett Hammond and Andy Howard, a variety of projects to discuss.
Okay, I'll start right up here. You guys all know Andy Howard, but Andy Howard's right here, the camera can't see him. Let's go get up and do a jig or something. Now he passed, next time. You all good? Andy's very, I think he's hopefully, if Mike does not come back, Chuck maybe can talk him into being the next, you know, applying for the next Iowa superintendent, but he's got a good, good head on his shoulders, good common sense. He's good feeling right now, great feeling, actually, Mike out in the interim, so. He's going to be busy here for the next all summer, get ready for winter. So one, first thing on this, most important thing really is the high hill drainage. So I had people last, early this, this spring do a complete survey out there, you know, survey the existing grades, property survey the roads, and we know what that is, so I can at least get a schematic design. I didn't think I'd have time to even get that done, but I felt this was an important project. I wanted to be able to get schematic design out to contractors so they can bid on it with some unit quantity prices. I was able to do that, put out the bid. There was limited interest, even at this time, whether or not contractors are starting to fill up. You know, given basis says, you know, that they could not fit this in the schedule later in the year. Buck, he's a little bit, so and Buck even said, you know what, if he, if he'll go longer, he may not get that. So the two bids received, you got Adam's trucking excavator, 138, 782, Gurney Brothers Construction at 16301. And I think a lot of that's due to the late construction, you know, start, late start because of COVID. I'm sure that has a lot to do with it. Now they're booked up and they're going to try to crunch a lot of projects in a shorter window. So I recommend with Adam's trucking excavating at 138, 782 and carrying a contingency of 21216. You've got to remember, this is not a fully completed design. It's some issues that, I've got, highlighted three or four issues there. The curve, the curving, the curving, whether it is how much straight and how much curved. Right now, they've been it all, all based on a straight curving. Drain man all five. Kind of a dark schematic here. That's the drain man just probably 20 feet before the head wall. So there's the pipe going out is 13 and a half feet deep, which is real big. RFP I put together had that actually being raised up by roughly 7.8 feet, just below the Denver coming in. To do that, that will require a cost of cutting a hole and filling that hole. Possibly, the cuts are probably Mike's, Mike's scoring and Mike's record possibly, maybe they can cut the same size and put it in place. I don't know, we'll have to figure that one out, but that's not part of the cost they did on the wall. So if you, any of you have probably walked, you probably have, Katano probably stepped in as well and walked up toward the head wall in the past. You'll see there's a retained wall, sort of a block wall on the left side. It looks like it's precast, set in place, not 100% convinced of that. So there could be some issues there. So in the bid, I put remove and reset that wall. If it's poured down and stuck to ledge, that'd be better, but I'm not sure if that's the case. So there could be some, some issues with that wall that we're not going to know until we start ripping pavement on it. But it's going to be deep enough hole that we need to make sure this is a safe hole that we dig it. And potential ledge, in other words, if ledge is in a way, obviously the ledge will, will not be an issue with pipe we're putting in, but it may be an issue for trench box that needs to go in so they can put the pipe in, which might not have been a consideration back in the seventies. So I recommend in, still with, with Adam's trucking 138, 782, with contingency of 21216. And that'll be, if there's any changes, that'll be recommended by the engineer with the manager's program. So it doesn't necessarily mean we'll spend 160, but I want to give Chuck enough leeway to make sure this project's done, completely the way it needs to be completed. Revenue wise, if you recall, we did have, we had $100,000, $100,000 in special article to complete this with a $60,000 potential grant. I was hoping that, and that's being held up also by, I think, the COVID, have not heard from the state yet. If we only did the pipe work itself. So obviously, if you look at the sketch that up on the screen there, area two is essentially pulling up all of the pavement. And area one, probably a third of the pavement. So area two would, would really require a complete restoration anyway. At that point, you want to put a new gravel, make sure it's all good and solid. Area one, you could trash patch. So if that's the case with contingency and installing the pipe, you're looking at around $140,000 versus the 160. Not a big difference. I would recommend, let's do it the way it's proposed, do the full 160. If you don't, if you do not receive the grant, the additional $60,000 can be taken out from, well, Channel 11 and every places, one of the, you know, some of the highway guys that will not be, one or two highway guys not fill next year on the works position. some highway guys that will not be, one or two highway guys not fill next year on the works position. Uh surplus, but one of those two. And we can do the section from, we're looking at just area one, area two, area three on that on the wall there on the screen is not being considered at this time. But when we are all said and done, the paving, if you recall, the paving plan does have an overlay on high hill. So that would set back down to a whole avenue and actually cover this all the way up. If you some open for any questions?
So we're not sure whether or not we even get that grant is what was the question.
No, I have a question on that. Uh two, about two, two and a half weeks ago, I just Alan May from Better Roads.
Yeah.
Emailed him and said, he should know about two weeks and still haven't heard. I tried calling today, could not get hold of him. Okay, I'm not sure if the link, I have to, whether it's, either for them or not, they're back in session.
Well, let me ask since I don't know. When they say there's a grant available, is or has the legislature already set that money aside for them?
That that part I do not know. I think we're waiting for their final vote.
Better Back Roads tends to be an annual thing, but all bets are off right now with the legislature.
Right.
So these are the, these are the type of programs, the solicitation, they'll probably get cut. They did get cut in the last reception.
Right, okay, thank you.
But it is uh just a reminder of the pipe itself. So the pipe at the head wall that goes into the wall uh disappears, drops out of sight, gets back in right by that drain man hole, the top drain man hole, real deep one.
Yep.
That's actually acting like a, it's a big pre- precast or cast plate structure, but acting like a head wall. So it's getting back in the broader pipe again.
Yeah.
Uh continues on down and uh so we haven't had any wash, we have any sink holes lay up on top, fortunately. Down below by the garage at the north end of area two, Andy's filled in the bass with a pretty large sink hole behind where they parked the car, the whole, you know, station wagon. So there's a lot of issues going on with that pipe. Uh critical to replace it. Yes, you could just replace just the pipe, probably looking a hundred forty versus, you know, the one sixty includes ripping up, putting curbing in and base and uh pavement. Because if we only do, start looking at trench patching, you're looking at instead of ninety dollars per ton, probably a hundred twenty dollars per ton. So there is not an economy of scale there. You know, it drives the price, it's trying to drop and some of that out.
This is for, this price is for area one and area two, correct?
Correct, yep. Full, full uh base and three and a half uh quarters of the pavement.
And area two is the biggest concern with that um head wall catch basin, right? Isn't that where we sent the camera up and which would you say is the worst?
Oh, the all of it is the worst. The whole pipe is the worst. Oh, yeah. It's all the same here.
Well, wasn't there a problem? I remember you explaining with the grate and the grate had been fixed and then we sucked the rocks out and fixed the grate. Wasn't that the cause of most of it? For the damage?
Mike's not sure of some of that. No, not the damage, like all the brick and gravel we had to suck and clean down the lines.
Cause of grizzly bears or whatever.
Grizzly bears right now, they're, they're, it's been solid for nine years.
So that's probably repaired, but the pipe that is going to.
Yeah, the pipe is definitely, yeah. We couldn't even be trying to put a camera through there.
It's the same era in area three, same.
No, area, area three is a good pipe. That's concrete pipe. From there all the way to Laurel Avenue and then from area three, there's also a twenty four inch line that heads north toward the senior center. So this, you know, the concrete pipe is, there's a lot of concrete pipe in town. For some reason, this did not get the concrete pipe back in the seventies.
I don't have any other questions. Anybody have any questions, Susan? You're muted, but I don't think he's.
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, you have any questions, Peter?
Nope. I have comments when we get to it.
Any more questions, Stefan?
No, just comment.
Uh entertain a motion. Want to make a motion, Susan, somebody?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a motion in front of me, but the motion is to uh grant the um bid to Adams Trucking. Correct?
Adams Trucking.
Or one, I got one sixty, I think it was. I can't remember. I don't, I don't have the, I can't pull up.
I wanna make it.
And.
Got it here. Sorry.
I'll make the motion to accept the Adams Trucking proposal of one hundred thirty eight thousand, seven hundred eighty two dollars. And to carrying a contingency fee or fund uh in the amount of twenty one thousand, two hundred and sixty, uh two hundred and sixteen for a total project cost of one sixty.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Accept uh the bid for the high hill drainage. Any questions? Discussion? Yes, sir.
This is not listed on the agenda for action. So we'll have to clarify at a future meeting. Also, the second item there is also not listed here. Should be under finance, should be under Highway Department A and B. Action, there's not listed there. All listed is presentation of a variety of projects. So.
Okay.
We can vote on it, but it's gonna have to be ratified at the next meeting. My concern, Mr. Chairman, is uh I did hear what was said. And questionable if the legislature will fund that or fully fund these projects of grants that they have out there. So I've been hesitant to at this time and situation with COVID and everything else and the economy going to hell in the hand basket to dip into reserves here that we have in the uh highway. So I'm not so sure if I get this project back. I'm not sure if I'd support it.
I hear you, I hear you loud and clear. I feel like this was a priority. And I just asked if there's one area worse than the other, and this is something we've been talking about for a long, long time. And that's how I feel. I feel at this time, I'm ready to.
Chairman, I support this sort of this thing, knowing that this whole neighborhood up here has had this problem for several years.
I was still talking.
You should remember that. Our, 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 that's up that far. So I think that this thing needs to get done. Oh, my, it needs to get done. I'm just expecting down the road, we're probably gonna hit a few more bumps in the road and other places and we're going into reserve if we have to, if the grants don't come through or grant doesn't come through.
Answer your comment directly, but we are looking at every aspect of highway cost cutting. Um we have come up with different staffing levels. Yeah, we call the floods, we understood the imperative, but that's that we're gonna be.
A little bit of a bad, so we're prepared for it.
Anything, Susan?
No, all set, thanks.
A motion's been made and seconded.
Just one comment. The motion, uh when it says total project cost, really be total construction cost. But if you look at project cost, that's engineering, that's the next thing we're talking about. Correct.
So this.
I, I wrote correctly, I, I should have wrote total construction cost.
And that contingency is not part of the engineering.
Right, it's not part of that.
So now we're gonna be looking at a project that's gonna be, it could be a hundred and seventy one thousand, a hundred and seventy two thousand. Or I'm sorry, a hundred and eighty two thousand. Depending on which way it goes. I don't anticipate savings, but.
You need to amend your motion.
I'll amend the motion to change it from the project to the term construction.
Uh second amendment, uh motion's been made, amended and seconded. All those in favor, which signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Yep, okay, next one. Uh this is high hill drainage engineer recommendation. We've got a quick RFP out on this one. Uh basically using some of your others as well and some violation. The results came in pretty much as expected. Two frame groups right around the area right now. Uh treatment's pretty good here. Uh thirteen eight ninety seven for Dubrin Group, heritage engineering out of Weathersfield, twenty one, seven, seventy. Uh no other bids. Uh right now, it's based on a maximum four hours per day onsite inspection, depending how it goes to feel, if additional time is needed or some of these other items I talked about, contingency is needs some engineering oversight. I would, I would like to see that uh contingency uh of uh sixty one oh three on top of that for a total of twenty thousand dollars. Again, that would, any difference would go through the manager. It's not like their, their agreement would say twenty thousand dollars. It's still the agreement of thirteen eight ninety seven. But Chuck, if he needs some eyes out there and he's busy, I want to make sure that the eyes are there when they're needed. Uh so the expense, this would come from the public work structure savings on that position. Uh twenty thousand dollars. I've got the recommendation bottom to accept Dubrin Group's proposal thirteen eight ninety seven and carrying contingency sixty one oh three for maximum engineering cost of one thousand.
So, hey, anyone have any questions? I have one. You're saying four hours, you need a engineer onsite inspection, four hours daily?
Right, yeah, that's part time. Part time inspection. It might, it's possible to do less than that. And it might be that they're here working on the High Street water project, so it might be a good mix. Maybe they're over here at six hours and only over here at two. You know, if he's here, then he can maybe stop by twice a day, an hour each time. But there's a lot of unknowns on that. You do want your eyes there, you know, make sure the grade is done, make sure the pipe put in right, changed. You don't want, you don't want boys on your bike. You know, six or eight hours, other times it will be one or two hours.
Want to make the motion?
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept Dubrin uh Group's proposal thirteen thousand eight ninety seven, all of recommended in uh for the contingency of six thousand one hundred and three dollars for maximum engineering costs of twenty thousand dollars.
A second.
Motion made and seconded to accept uh Dubrin's proposal for high hill engineering. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Again, next meeting.
Uh just a few project update then, but you know, my opportunity. Uh Highway Group, uh they've done a great job up there, just to commend them as far as the work up there and the team effort. Uh led on that, you know, it's, it's not a simple three foot drainage going across the road, you know, it's quite lying grave. We're making it deep enough so that when the road is rebuilt, next fifteen, twenty years down the road, that we're not digging the top of drains. Uh that's the last thing we want to do is then replace it twenty years from now. So that section of drain line that's installed now will not need to be replaced. So everything, the first phase up on top, it's kind of a system that was put in, that's all done, came out exactly as planned. Couple areas were lucky, skinned right over the top of the ledge. Ledge, but you don't know, we did, Andy did a couple, three or four test bits one day and we were good there, but with test bits with X grade, you never know what you're gonna hit. Right now, finish that up, five.
Yes, we only got one uh ring and cover left to put on and then pave in the crossovers.
Okay.
And dress up the lawns.
In the upper end. And then it's, I think, five catch bases to install at the lower end. Uh and then raise those covers and and patch. So they're moving along pretty good, get ready for the overlay of asphalt July, chipsy in August. So things are going well there. Uh next thing, uh that was good as a great drainage, Saxon River sidewalks. I suspect it'll start in the next one to two weeks. So hopefully everything will go well there. Uh late streets, container wall, that has started. Uh so the earthwork happened last week. Buck had it all, did my job, put that all down. Leave that. Uh Mike Peelo started footings, warm up the footings today, the rebar will be ready tomorrow afternoon for the first pour of two of the sections. Uh probably it'll be the second pour. Next week will be the wall. And uh everything should hopefully be, all those will all be done during the next week. Let it cure up a little bit, Buck will move back in and back fill. And uh one of the things that I talked to, to uh oh Andy and I and Chuck talked, but look at it, uh the stairs. So we're not putting the stairs back in. This kind of worked out as a win-win. So by eliminating the stairs, we've still got to have them coming out there. So they're actually gonna come down the front steps. This is uh number one, I think it's number one. Like head and direction, we're gonna put a little sidewalk over to the driveway. And so we did remove the rest of that wall. So if you drive through and wonder why all the wall is removed instead of eighty eight feet, it was sort of a cheaper way to do it. Made them, it was gonna make the area better and no one stepping onto the street. It's better for town, better for the owner, and actually had less cost. But it turned out to be a win-win for all of us.
So when we discussed that, we mentioned that and that the reason this wall was gonna be so expensive and couldn't be uh precast blocks was because of the stairs. So now we've suddenly changed it. But it's gonna cost us the same amount of money?
As like red rock? Yeah, no, there's, there's ledge as well. So there, we were unsure of the ledge. We did hit ledge through there, so we were able to put the stone in. So we were able to make it work with the ledge, with the footings. So there was a lot of unknowns that could have happened. And we got the.
When did the stairs get removed from the project?
Uh last week, like probably uh Thursday, last Thursday.
Why?
It worked out better. They're looking at, they would like to see that left, we were gonna put an eighty eight feet wall and leave them up three sections of one wall, wrapping up the corner of the driveway. Instead of doing that, you know, they, they realized they weren't happy with that. We talked to them, came up with a solution of, okay, I will, we'll make the stairs. By not putting the stairs in, it saves us money. We can put a, a stretch of uh sidewalk, probably twenty five feet of sidewalk over to the driveway up on top. And uh they were happy with that. It's less liability on the town, there's no stairs, people stepping out onto the street, which is what they would have been doing. And the stair construction is not easy construction to build.
We had, we had that discussion at our last meeting about the stairs and those aren't the answers that you gave us.
So you're right. We were, at that point, we were gonna put the stairs in, that is correct.
Which increased the cost considerably when we, when Stefan had asked those questions and other options.
If we were trying to save the stairs and stop the wall short.
He said you had to save the stairs.
There's a lot of unknowns that could have happened there.
Was the answer we got, because we had to put the stairs back there.
We did at that point. And and the owner did not, at that point, say we need that, they did not come up with this option. So this is an option after the fact. That was a win-win for all. Uh slight small change, but uh we get rid of the blunt end of the section, the corner of the wall that somebody could hit in the future. If someone's crying around the corner, that will be gone. It'll be a taper down wall.
And then where's, where's the sidewalk?
It's gonna go to the, if you're walking out of the front steps.
Yep.
The front porch, we'll get a small little porch. Three, four steps down, they'll turn left, walk toward the driveway.
Okay, so the, and but if, if the stairs aren't there, why do we need a sidewalk there?
Well, so they can get over to the driveway. That they, they had the stairs, the walkway that went to the top of stairs, then stairs went down to the wall.
Okay.
So we're still, we need to get them over at least to the driveway so they can walk out the driveway.
Is there a way you can come out the other side towards the driveway? Instead of coming out and putting in this sidewalk, it seems to me, as long as I can remember, no, the, for Boston, I don't think anybody's ever come out that front door and down the steps and walked over the driveway. I thought there was a second door off the backside of that house.
Yeah, right, I asked them that. And they were, they were not interested in that idea.
Okay, oh, just thought, thought out there.
Is there a?
I had little kids, I, when my kids were little, we used to go to that house every year for trick or treating and that is a dangerous spot with them stairs there. When you come off it at nighttime, you know.
I understand that, but we brought this up as, as members of the select board. We're not engineers, we're not construction managers.
Yep, I was just bringing up the.
The answer we were told was it couldn't be done. That's why it was costing so much money.
That is.
I didn't support that project for the first. I didn't support that project for the first day.
And not that it couldn't be done, they did, they wanted the stairs in. And after, but when they started considering the fact they wanted the rest of the wall ripped up, we said, no, we're not doing that. It was, how do we make this work? So it's, okay, back under on board, how do we, how do we do this, so we're all coming out win-win, without any extra cost on the town. So we remove the stairs, put the walkway over to the driveway, slope that far into the wall down, so that it's down to a zero elevation.
In the planning stage, did you meet with the homeowner and discuss all that?
Yeah.
And what was this, what was the plan back then?
Put it back in, just to put the stairs back in then.
What was the discrepancy in not removing the wall away that you just said, and then when you got there, did the work?
So, you know, this was a kind of a hard, slow push project too, you gotta remember that. It was, I said, we're gonna go to eighty-eight foot mark, which is about where the street sign was, and that's where we're stopping. They were fine with it. And then it was the second thinking after we, they saw that, they cut. They started thinking they liked that idea, so it's, okay, we'll have to make this work for all, so it's you know, turned, I think it turned out as a win-win for all.
And that sidewalk will have some type of curving, so will people come up around that?
No, the sidewalk I'm talking about is sidewalk and, and coming off the house.
Coming off the house.
Or driveway, that's nothing to do with at the edge of the street will be a slope, granite curb, no sidewalk.
Okay, so that's
Three foot grass truck.
So basically sidewalk's the trade-off for not doing the stairs.
Right.
Okay.
And we're not, we're not taking the wall off the road, up to the driveway either.
Right.
Which is where it was before. That, that was definitely, that would have thrown the cost way up.
Was there an issue with a water line or water meter up there on that project?
I don't know, the water, they did hit the water, they broke it, repaired that, and the sewer, so those are things that, if you use ready rock, would have been very difficult. Because the sewer line went up on angle, any type of thing other than casting. A ported place would have been a very difficult wall. Because of sewer, not the water, but at least because of sewer. So there's, there's a lot of issues there that
And when they get broken or damaged, it, it would base that.
Now, we put a new sewer in that's down, only from the, where the edge of the road up where the wall is worn. That's about ninety feet of sewer line. That's all part of the work Buck put in. What else, the next? One other thing we talked about, granite blocks, one of the things I had considered, you know, there's two steep areas in town, that's fact. And that's actually a street that you wrote up, Gaetano. It's down below Sorry, Sue.
Open up.
So if you look at the next, oh, not the next, oh, the back of that floor with a piece of granite there, you'll see a real steep bank. That's on the south side of Park Street, so if you were to flip this one over, that, this one here.
I think I already talked
Okay, and then, south of the wall, the building's another very steep section. Those are the ones that I had played with different ideas of the past, looked at maybe some custom cut granite pieces, soap granite pieces, put it in here. Probably that, the cost is way, really extravagant. So then, talking to the wall guy. Pilo? Uh, no, not Pilo, Peter Walsh. So he's a stone mason, definitely, don't get all excited, Susan, small here. So I'm talking, and he came up with the the idea is a slope, granite curb, you know, we looked at these blocks, that's a good picture of the block, it's, it's a waste product from waste, from rock ages. If I put it vertical, I have a hard time, you know, hate to see that vertical, you know, put an half inch, one and a half pieces sticking up above the road. So we talked about maybe putting on a slope, that's what that schematic shows, putting on a slope, this one here.
Putting this vertical?
No, putting on, put the whole block on that, on a slope. So then, on a one-to-one slope, and then the ground would, would enter to it. If I put this one vertical, the earth is not gonna hold to that vertical, you know, that horizontal flat surface very well. So this is actually minimally difference of cost from the actual slope, or from granite curb. Overall, those two sections might be thousands of dollars actually. I talked to Chuck, he said, yes, let's do it, that'll happen the week after next. And that'll, that'll, should alleviate a lot of the slope, of the erosion issues we've got.
And right on the corner of that street, there's that one section that wasn't, that's the one that initially caught my
You want on Park Street?
Yeah.
Okay, so
But on Blake, that, it's like, there's nothing there right now, I think there's some like riprap further up, Blake, in this photo.
Oh, yeah, so that section we're gonna do as well, yeah.
I think there's like riprap, or whatever this is.
Right.
But then where it turns, there's a pretty steep section, that's like
So from his driveway
That granite stuff will go in there?
Yeah, Mike Griffin's driveway, right, the same stuff's going from that driveway to the edge of that wall, the new wall.
We have to pile up against too, huh?
That's gonna be set at a pretty And then we're gonna go with slope, granite curb and after that, so it's all slope, granite curb, it shouldn't blend right into that, so there's no blunt edge.
Where does that stuff come from, this stuff?
That's rock ages. So that's Berkeley Park, one I remember. So Berkeley Park, actually, that's by end of June, it should be coming to a, a good end. We're looking at curving, possibly starting and completing Thursday, usually, one day they'll come in and probably put eight hundred, a thousand feet of curve in hell. Sidewalks will be next week, and paving, probably the fourth week of June, and so they should be pretty well closing out on that. And then annually moving forward on on paving, one of the, one of the streets, just sort of orders of where that will be last on the list is Center Street, people that live on Center probably don't hear that. But we're gonna make sure there's enough tonnage in the budget to complete everything else first prior to doing Center Street, so we stay within the budget. And when, the other issue, it's good to know, people that live on Center and, and the board and Chuck and Andy, hey, Center Street currently has puddles. So unless you, it has puddles. So unless you rebuild that road and try and get rid of those puddles, you're gonna probably chase puddles when you do anything out of the way. So chances are after this, although you're done, even though they might see where the puddles are, they're gonna try and get rid of them. You're probably gonna move on. It's, it's just inevitable when you have a street that has decent sized puddles and you try to pave it. But they'll do the best they can, but it will be smoother. And the other thing with puddles that are on freshly paved surfaces, they tend to last a little longer, because right now you got a broken surface, it will creep its way down through and squirt its way into the ground. So that's it for paving, that'll be a little bit later on, chip seal in August. Last on the list is, this Thursday is my last full day, I will be, keep an eye on it a little bit late at night, maybe a little time checking on Mike Pilo, just to make sure that wall, you know, it's well longer right in there, you do, you know, help out there. And that's it. No, no more, no more RFPs, it was good that was there.
They were out getting a lot of painting done too, right? Seemed like they got a lot done in a short amount of time, and my understanding is they might have two coated some of them?
Yes, the The main drags, mainly because in the square, going from Cumberland Farms to Red Light Hill, it's in the wintertime when we, where we do stone removal, we double coat it. And we tried it last year, and it seemed to help out, it's more paint, more money, but
But do you think it lasts longer?
Yeah, I think so, especially over the chip seal, because the chip seal, the first coat really absorbed it. And the second coat, it helped out a lot, yes, it lasted
Well, is it, it'd be interesting to look at the cost savings of having the guys there, walking the road, having all the material, two coating it every time, every single one, as opposed to one coating it every year. Because you're, I'm just wondering, because it sounded like the two coats held up better, which is ultimately, even if you have to do them every year, if it can last six months of the dry road season.
Yep.
So folks can cross the roads in a visible crosswalk.
But if you look at like the side streets, like even Atkinson Street, where we don't do stone removal, a lot of the, a lot of the squares are still there. So, I mean, you know, so do you really want to do that, spend the money, if they're, it's still staying there? The only reason we tried it in the square, because that's where we do the stone removal, the grater, you know, really takes a number on them.
Which one did you say? Atkinson, where?
Atkinson School, like Green Street, a lot of the squares are still partially there. They're separate, you know, the wheel tracks are obviously are worn out a little bit, but the rest of them are still there, where in the square, usually there's only, they're only on the edges.
All right, it looks great.
Yeah, in the last couple of days, because the weather hasn't been super great, last two days, it's been cold in the morning, so we got them up on grizzle drive, doing the rings and covers, and Thursday's supposed to be a nice day, they're gonna get back going.
We did second coats in a number of areas, as you know, I was out there with them, I can tell you that I'm not really qualified to spray, so the area that doesn't look great is because I was given the wand to spray, but we definitely tried double coats in certain areas to make sure that they last longer. Gaetano's right, if you're gonna mobilize, you're gonna have all the equipment out there, you might as well try to add an extra coat to make sure it stays longer.
One last thing, I know you brought this up before in the past, the chip seal up through here. So when talking to Mike and the guys, you know, we, a lot of that is because that little bit of running, and we do scrape, put down pressure on, when we do stone removal, we're back and forth through there, with the grater. So really, it's a way I look at it, it's not a failure of product, it's a failure of our excessive down pressure. Maybe in that case, anywhere we, we actually pull, probably don't want a chip seal where anywhere we actually pull with grater. That's something maybe we shouldn't have considered, we didn't consider. Down the road, that stretch there, it's nothing urgent at this point, other than maybe a little statics, but there's a few structures in there, anytime we've got paving in this area somewhere nearby, we could, in the future, put that on a paving contract and just mill out an inch all the way down through the inch and a quarter. And then repay that inch and quarter, it's not talking big dollars, and you wouldn't have to chip seal it, just mill it out, repay it, and walk away from it. And that can be
What is it, the downforce of the grater? What did you say?
Yeah.
So do you use it from the bridge to Cumberland Farm, that same piece of equipment?
For its removal, we use it, yeah.
Well, how come that held up?
You know, running on, on, that's why sections got the running through here. So you get more running through there.
More running from the surface underneath?
No, so it's a high point, so what is shaving off, high points of the road.
I don't, they were both installed at the same time, but, you know, we've gone over this, but I, I don't think it looks good, and I don't think it's, I think it's a number of things, and I've actually been hearing a lot of comments about the way it looks, because we spent a lot of money on it, we were talked into it because it was gonna preserve the surface of the road for years. And it looks like it's fifteen years old.
Yeah, well, it's still a reserve of service. You know, this, the high points there with restors being preserved.
I make a comment on the chip seal?
Sure.
Ever, you know, I don't, I'm not a favorite of chip seal. A grizzle drive especially, Parker Hill is the same way, if you run a motorcycle, you can't use it for a year, first year after the chip seal, because all the stones, nothing is very slippery, and then after several years afterwards, it is slippery in the summer. I'm not a fan of chip seal anyway, especially on I know it'll be nice tracks in the first couple of years.
You ever stopped your motorcycle on the freshly painted crosswalks with that little grip they put in there?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, but that
No, I know.
Yeah. Motorcycles are dangerous, ain't it?
But that's, that goes away. With the comment of
Thank you.
Chairman, is that, are you all on, ever, you had now?
I'm saying if you change that thing.
I have one question. It also involves manager, maybe, I don't know if he's even aware. Pine Street, the wall that was struck by the sidewalk plow, owned by, owned by the gentleman, the, the great person that runs Famous Lisa, he says he had reported it, I have been walking down the street one day, he asked me about, about it, I didn't know, it was struck by the plow with that, what's our deal with that?
Okay, I've talked to him, he lives right there.
Yeah, I know, don't try to figure his name out.
Nick?
Eric Harris.
So where that stands right now, that's gonna have to be in jux and Andy's lap. The reason I wanted to try these blocks, because I think that might be a good product to use in place of that wall, you know, maybe one stack, one or two stacks of these type of granite choice blocks, if that does work, then you can taper back in there, because they're gonna be heavy enough and should not be topping over, the other one, it was, it was the smaller, probably eight inch wide, you know, early on, they were about the same time maybe ready rock, ready rock was coming out, that's a twenty-year-old wall, but it's the cheaper version, and I remember, I think my guys, one of the other guys, Eric, Frank, and a couple other guys. Excessive soil pressure and then rubbing, you know, against the narrow sidewalk and the sidewalk plow, it was salt, it grows in against the base of that, the base finally popped out. But statically right now, it doesn't look good, the wall's gonna lean, but I think these blocks, if I hand it out, might be a good solution for that.
Andy, you looking at that one, right?
Yep.
You have noticed that that one end, the southern end, but the northern end of it is leaning out?
Yeah.
I think we're responsible for that.
We put that wall in, we're initially, right?
Unfortunately.
Over twenty years ago. And there's a root tree there too, that might be to do with wall rate, that tree may have to come out, so it's something, Chuck.
There's a point of information, if history serves me correctly, when the trolley ran up Pine Street, the town lowered that road and installed those stone walls. So they're also gonna be, the town is also responsible for it, like, and those stone walls are up there, especially on Fifty Fine, the two or three foot side, size tall wall on the right side, just public piece place. And I understand, but he had a wall, stone wall at one time on his lawn, but he removed it, so. This is a point going forward.
Okay, number four. Finances.
Do you wanna start?
No, do you want to give overview?
Sure.
It should be relatively.
Um, met with Gaetano and Deb and Chuck today and went over where we think we're gonna land for the end of the year, so the town general fund, we're anticipating to come in a hundred thousand dollars on the budget between overage and revenue under, and then under expenses. Highway, we are projected to come in right at budget. So that's the high, high level. But, but all good news.
From a management perspective, we're trying to make sure all the costs that we can have hit this fiscal year. Just clear it out and get ready for maybe a different budget as next fiscal year.
All the tax revenues coming, I noticed there were like about a hundred and sixty thousand down or something like that, if you're looking at the, the report.
Um, so
Good luck.
That's just from the last installation.
Yeah, I know, I thought it might be the case.
Yeah, so we, I don't project a shortfall at all.
Okay, no, I just, just thought it was like the numbers down, so.
But I will, Sue had requested a delinquent tax list, so we'll get you guys an updated one. Tomorrow morning, we'll, we'll send them to the town and the select board and the trustees too.
Okay, if I may ask, what's happening with the tax sales?
We, we, our intention is still to move forward, we don't have a significant amount of properties that are delinquent at this time, you'll see tomorrow, and if you review the town report and the village report, there just are not a significant amount. That was our project right before COVID hit. So I'm still definitely a priority.
You were going to training or something?
We did, Pam and I did go to the training. But between, you know, downsizing or the production and lost revenue and COVID, we're a little underwater.
Any other questions on that? Susan, have anything?
No, I don't have anything, but I just want to know, are, are, are at what point are we gonna be looking at the next fiscal year budget? Are we going to have to be making some changes there? I mean, I know we don't, we won't really know until August what's gonna happen with taxes coming in. If we're gonna have a problem there and we need I know that the governor has allowed select board, or the, not the governor, but the legislation to revise budgets without a townwide vote, just through twenty twenty, is this something we're gonna be looking at?
Chuck and I would like to do that and, and review it with the boards, vote, vote boards.
Yeah, we feel strongly that we want to present you all some contingency plans and to have you all review a downward revision of the budgets. There's also discussions that we want to have at the combined board about There's also discussions that we wanna have at the combined board about continuation of helping the taxpayer eating some of those credit card fees that we continue to do, things like that matter when people are trying to juggle bills to pay. So we wanna keep forward on some things that will increase our costs, but we generally wanna revise the budget downward.
And when are we gonna do that, because when, we're gonna have to be setting the tax rate at some point, so.
So my understanding is we, we can do the revisions and reset the tax rate, but I'll have to
You wouldn't know until you've made your revisions. So I think we wouldn't know, we wouldn't have a very good idea until August of what we need to do, unless you wanna anticipate, like we've been talking about for two months, anticipating what's gonna happen.
So we'll be setting the tax rate for our current budget passed at March, and then we look at this again when we have a sense in August, what's happening.
We're working as fast as we can to get you the answers, that way when you decide to start looking at this in August, we have finalized everything from highway to water sewer, et cetera, that we kind of have a good idea of what is optional, what can be cut, and what is simply just not cuttable.
Can't do anything till you got a grant list, right? Grant list, yeah.
Right, we can't set the tax rate till we get the grant list.
Does that, do you know what the school is doing? When they are gonna, the state's gonna set that school tax rate? Keep reading emails and seeing news, they, they still, are still, seem to be kicking that football around in the legislature. And that also depends on where our tax rate kind of flops, too.
I have not seen anything come through finalized from
I didn't know, maybe there's some idea of when that might be coming through, if it comes through about the same time, we're looking at revising ours in August, and, you know, it should be
Nothing else on this current report? You saw it tonight, right? Next is human resources update on personnel rule.
So nothing's changed from the set of personnel rules that you guys received? If you are ready to approve them, I guess it might be the ratification at the next meeting. Or we can wait and do it at the next meeting, next Tuesday, the trustees will be, it'll be on their agenda to approve, so we could do this the following week with the select board as well. But just wanted to answer any questions, now that you guys have had a time to review it.
Wouldn't that be just as well, we'll do it on the 30th with the joint board, and then the whole boards can do it same time, a little more than one bell's full.
Any questions? We're on live speaking, go home and review it, have any comments that you would wanna raise?
I don't. Anything else on that?
Comment before Everett leaves. Maybe the last meeting, we're gonna see him today, I'd like to just thank him for his service. Let him know that it's probably gonna be missed going forward, and we'll find out over this time hold on. Thanks, Everett.
Yep, thanks.
Number six, Rockingham Westminster Recycle Center.
I'll start, the manager started a committee, the committee met for the first time, Gaetano is one of the members of that committee. We have a individual, a few Westminster residents, Rockingham residents, a mixed mixture of residents. And we have an individual who works over at the Walpole Recycle Center, and being a Walpole resident, I might be a little biased, but that is a very well-run center and has some ideas that we may want to incorporate, things like bags versus stickers. But this committee has 45 days to work together, they are starting their work tomorrow, believe it or not. Some of them are volunteering at the recycle center to just firsthand experience what it's like there, so that their recommendations are grounded in sort of an acknowledgement of what's happened. So you kind of learn most by volunteering and getting a part of it. I will keep this board apprised of any activities in this committee, but ultimately, I really wanna see a list of solutions that I can implement in quick fashion this summer and in fall. I think some goals is trying to get back in the black, so this is not an enterprise, it's backfilled by the general fund. Hopefully, that is something that is attainable, we'll find out as we go forward, but trying to get out of the red, I think is a clear imperative. Another goal is improving the customer's experience, so with making sure that they feel we wanna grow the number of people that visit the center, because if we operate at scale, scale can mean profit depending on the things you're bringing in. So we're, we're really considering a customer service type approach to this as well. Gaetano, is there anything I need to add?
Nope, I'd say we started work today, and unlike, and you said, starting tomorrow, but I started today and I'll have recommendations at the end. A lot of ideas just today.
Still a question. This is not a board-appointed committee. Obviously, as you just stated, that you, you should be committee, anybody keeping minutes?
We don't need to
Is that, was that the intent, so that they wouldn't have to keep minutes?
It was not the intent, it came up at the first meeting, that there would be a legal issue, and people would be thinking along those terms. It never even occurred to me. We brought the matter to the town's attorney immediately, that town's attorney came back with a comment that said, it's the manager's meeting, this is a subgroup, an ad hoc group, this is very common in municipal work. If the committee was appointed by the select board, so you reviewed applications, applicants, you selected volunteers, that group would fall under public meeting law.
I realize that, just making a point. The other thing, a couple of comments, seems like putting more time in, and also anybody else on this board. I suggest your volunteers work on a Saturday, that's the busiest day. They can really see how crazy it gets down there. The dog lies that someone keeps an eye on that C and D dumpster, because a lot of people pull over there without getting in the line and throw stuff in those dumpsters without paying. We lose revenue there. And there's added after I finally got in there. At 8:00, the traffic was backed up the top of the hill, to the high school on the shoulder, and the same going south on the Southbound side. Coming north and not down Westminster, I just turned around, coated yard, went to Springfield, and came back at 10:00 and said, we'll get in. But double line still at the recycle, that's the part that gets the biggest holdup. Nobody was at the rubbish dumpster, except one gentleman who threw bags in the dumpster, got the truck and drove away, I don't know if he paid. I didn't see anybody tending that dumpster.
All of those things were discussed.
Um, any points that I've seen go on down there, just wanna make sure.
All of those items were discussed today.
And I caution you people, and your pricing, when you discuss that point, you don't wanna get too expensive on items, because you're gonna end up with stuff sitting side the roads, it's starting out now, there's couches sitting there. All kinds of stuff sitting on the side of road right now. Coming to those Jabalas falls, that are just laying on the sidewalk.
So that's a good overview of the recycling committee. Next, we have discussion on Westminster reappraisal of that facility.
You talked about it before the meeting, just, I guess it's just a matter for your attention. We're gonna go forward with contesting the reappraisal, we'll keep you aware of developments.
And, and do we know if the village has a representative?
Of course.
Last year, I don't have any.
Thank you.
Perfect.
If you guys need
That's it for now on that, next, number seven. Thomas Anderson Solar LLC, proposed solar project. Discuss anything?
I didn't see any red flags, but it's not my and I don't have the responsibility or the obligation to be a party status individual, it's up to this board. If you see something that you need to get involved in, by all means, we need to provide comments, but if it's, it seems pro forma, so really the board's discretion.
Same, we're going down here, here at the town.
We've dealt with this before at the planning commission level, seems to be more of the same, I don't understand why it keeps getting resubmitted, but
Yeah, no, I just, I just bring it up, because it's the same one, it's been back year after year, and each year we've voted not to do anything with it.
Okay.
No, but this is I mean, we had a concern when they put in their first solar panel, because they were thinking of going through what, a town road to access it, and then they changed the access point, so I think that was the only concern, is that they don't use can't think of the name of the road right now, it's a really narrow road, right off of Cambridge Road. But clearly, they're not, they're, they're using the gravel road access. The only other issue maybe, and I, I don't know, it's actually probably a state thing, is that that bank that goes down to 103 can erode, so just wherever they end up putting in power poles to get into the phase three line, that's the only concern, but that's a state issue, because it's going onto 103, not a town issue.
Typically, bank stabilization, you're gonna see the agency of transportation, as well as the agency of natural resources, providing input. Historically, boards are concerned with aesthetic issues, development patterns, things that are more cultural and local in nature.
And then, I mean, the only other thing, their map was wrong, and there is a resident closer than what they say, but it's still about 500 feet away, but minor thing.
Thank you.
There's nothing we need to even do here.
Nope.
Nope.
They're gonna file.
This is the revised plan, because they slightly moved where they're citing it, we saw this last year, I think.
What if I did, period expires.
They're slight, they're citing their panels in a slightly different place, so they have to reapply, I believe.
Okay. Anything else, Stephen, you have anything? No, nothing to discuss here. Moving on, we now have number eight, A, manager's search discussion.
I'll, I'll just wonder what that stands. I know it was supposed to be put on this agenda, but for some reason, it didn't get on here, as to what we were gonna do. So I'm just trying to find out where this board is thinking you're going.
It's on the draft agenda for the combined boards, but Peter correctly said that there was a comment made before about having it on the slide board. It will be on the combined board.
So to answer my question, where is this board thinking at this point? Are we gonna go forward with the search, or are we just gonna sit back and let things take its course?
I, I've already expressed my opinion on that. I'd be happy to share it again if you'd like.
Yes, that would be good.
I, I'm not in favor of doing what we did last time, spending that kind of money to go through that process.
So what alternative then? I mean, the problem is if we don't go through, the, I mean, VLCT did a lot of the administrative work. That was, at this point in time, we don't have anybody in town hall who can do that.
How much did we spend last time, Susan?
$3,500, I wanna say. A lot of that was advertising various places, and for them to do, they handled all of the applicants. They sent, put all the packets together for us, they handled all of the telling the people who were not selected, they did that handling of those phone calls.
So you're suggesting, or your comment, you feel like we would have someone in town hall equipped to do all that?
Well, I mean, I don't know who else would do it if we don't use VLCT, I mean, if you put out, who's gonna be going through all the applications?
That's what we did last time, was paid someone else to do it, I believe, I'd have to look back, I, I think it was significantly more than $3,500, but it seems like that's what they do, so my feeling of the whole process was ultimately the majority boards didn't listen to the committee, so I'm not, it was a long process.
The league usually charges $7,000 to $10,000, that's been my experience, $3,000 seems to be inconsistent, but maybe there was a smaller package she took.
It could be because the village had to pay half of it, too.
That would make
That could be right there, yeah.
If you go back and look directly, you're gonna find that we voted to spend not more than $7,500, and it was split between the two villages, which amounts to $3,750.
Yeah.
My math served me correctly.
It came in at right about $7,000.
That's consistent with what the league offers.
I think we need to move forward. Some of Chuck's emails have said that he can't, he doesn't, has spent all the time to do this job, he can't do two jobs. His phone rings constantly all the time, he's asked the board to take out some of the slack, which shouldn't be done. It's getting away from the town manager, former government, we're now running the town by committee, not by a manager. I think we need to start looking, and the earlier the better. Chuck said he's rather have this, this time to short time. I, I think in order to help them out, I think we should be ready to move forward.
Peter, I'll push back on one comment, we are trying to integrate the boards, that is one of my primary responsibilities of the weeks ahead. We wanna make sure you're engaged, you're in the loop, you're aware of what's going on, if you want. You have a role to play, an active role to play, so we're, we're gonna be all-inclusive going forward.
I agree with Peter, I think we need to really figure out how we're gonna do this process, and, and, I mean, I hate to wait, wait till the joint board to make a decision, and that's a whole month away. And I, I just don't know how, how we'd be able to do it in-house, I mean, who's, who's gonna handle all of the, I mean, we gotta, there was a lot of applications that came in, that people had to be called and said, sorry, you don't qualify, I mean, who's gonna do all that?
Okay, I would disagree that Chuck is overwhelmed, if you read his daily emails, the amount of work that's getting done in a day. And he hasn't asked for any of my help with anything, except to remain as a board member. So I've seen prior chairs of this board in the town hall every day, previously, as far as getting involved with integrating our roles here, I would disagree with that comment as well.
Should we at least just ask, I mean, approach VLCT? I mean, I don't know if things will, I mean, if that's the price, then we're talking $7, $3,500 on, on our side. Of course, the trustees would have to agree to whatever the process is.
Doing something in-house and just seeing what our result is.
Well, with the first thing to do, we be form a committee, like, I'm pretty sure there is like, there's an individual that sent some emails, I think we discussed about that, this person. So like, wouldn't the first thing be to form a committee to perhaps speak to that person? And, and if you run an ad, I mean, who's gonna respond to applicants at this point?
Enjoy. Yeah, I, I mean, I did the recruiting for my last organization, so we could run an ad, you guys could have strict qualification. Yeah, I, I mean, I did the recruiting for my last organization, so we could run an ad. You guys could have strict qualifications that you want. You could use the qualifications that we used in the last committee. And we can. Do preliminary interviews so that by the time you have a committee ready, they, we have whatever candidates are qualified lined up for interviews. See where we get and then we don't.
Well, I think it'd be a good idea to get some ideas. Of what the process is now compared to when we did the last one and also get some ideas of costs. The other thing that's important to me though is. With this decision here with, with Chuck, you have somebody who's from the organization who knows. Or is familiar with the, the organization, what this board or the other board may be looking at. In addition to dealing with that. I like the, the daily briefings. I'm not so sure if they're necessary, but there's things that come up. And I certainly think it's a night and day difference compared to previous administrations. But we're in the middle of a COVID situation here in this pandemic. There's other things going on in the state that are going to involve this community, whether it be with the school system or school funding. And I think it's, we need to hunker down. Chuck's only been in this role for what? Less than, not even a month. So. I believe we're saving money at the moment. We're going to look for other ways to. Whether it be trimming these budgets or become more efficient. I'm not so sure what the rush is.
Rush is that we need a manager there. That's, that's. The boards need to get their heads together. It's what they want to see in the manager, not just throwing that in the paper and say, we'll look for somebody with qualifications. The problem that we've had in the past is that nobody, we're not all on, both boards are not on the same page. That's the problem. And you've got to decide what you want to see in the manager before you can advertise, look for anybody. If you can't get your heads together, the trustees want one thing and the rest, select board wants something else, it's never going to work. You're going to end up going to managers left and right.
All right, okay. I don't, I'm not in any area, we have a manager, we have an acting manager. Yes, ma'am.
Let's redo something special, the opportunity to just be both boards so we can get our heads together.
Yeah, correct.
June thirtieth.
Correct.
Bringing between the lines here, appears that there's not a move to replace or looking for managers, is that correct?
Is that what you get from reading between the lines, Peter? I was agreeing with Stephen.
You've made the comment, we have a manager.
We do. You said we didn't have one. That was your comment. Read the tape. That was your comment.
Well, what I'm looking at is right now, you have somebody that's on the team, regardless of who it is, the village is dealing with the. Police department. There's issues there that I'm sure that I can't discuss. And you read whatever, whatever in the paper, but I mean, I'm sure he's been brought up to speed. We've got issues here on the select board. We're talking about projects that we may have to reduce or may not do at all. We're looking at whether staffing levels. We're all familiar with that. Bringing somebody in mid-pandemic, this thing could go till the end of the year or beyond. I mean, they could be the second wave. Now, at the moment, we've got somebody at the helm. It's, it's moving along. No, I don't see what, I, again, don't see what the rush is at the moment.
We can discuss it at the joint board so that both boards can decide. The direction to move forward.
Well, this process is going to take a while. I mean, the last one took us a good three months, so. I, I don't think we can keep pushing it back, pushing it back. I, I think we need to get started as soon as possible. I mean, we're going to burn out Chuck quickly.
Disagree with that comment that you made several times. I disagree with that comment. Look at what's getting done. It's not, it's not, we're not getting burnt out. He's built for.
He's only been in the job two weeks. So, I mean, I, and there's.
Every day.
Anyway, I, I think we need a manager and we need to start the process sooner rather than later. So that's my statement.
What process would that be?
Looking for hiring a new manager, hiring a full-time manager.
By, by how, how, what's the process?
Well, that's what we all have to discuss. I mean, clearly, I mean, it sounds like you don't want to spend the money. On VLCT and go the process we did before, so we have to figure out what that process would be. Do we do it like Shannon suggested in-house?
I think that's a good, good suggestion, but we wouldn't be able to make that decision here tonight.
I know that. I mean, we're discussing this.
Discussing it as a joint board.
Did I make a comment on someone that's been through this before?
I've been through it. I sat on that committee for three months with the last manager.
Yeah.
Went to every meeting, interviewed twenty-one people.
Exactly. We did the same thing at least once. That's time consuming.
Very.
What we did was, we had to call all of their references, where you like, we took four people.
We did.
Took four, and that, it just, I'm just saying, it takes a long time to do that and a lot of work on your part.
First, we'd have to get the pool of people, the candidates, so we'd decide how we want to do that. And I think we can't make that decision as a select board. We need to see the trustees. They may say. We disagree completely. You guys want to pay seven grand to VLCT or we're, we're staying out of it? Because we can't, I mean, if they want to make a suggestion how they'd like to move forward today.
No, I agree. I'm just saying it's going to be a long time if you do it in-house. It's still going to be a long time with VLCT, but it's going to be a lot of work in there, right? And that's just, I'm telling you from.
I, I, I sat on that committee from day one I was on that committee. It was a long process. Where we each background checked, you get simple background checks to eliminate candidates.
Yep.
Second interviews.
So it, I think is the question. Do you guys want to have a meeting before the joint board meeting, a special meeting? Or is that?
Well, I don't see any need for a special meeting. I mean, you know, what? Put it on the agenda, we'll discuss it, then if we have to, regardless of the summer schedule, if it requires another special, a special meeting or a scheduled meeting. I'm sure we can do that.
It would be nice if the trustees could at least have a discussion like we just had. Because I, what I'm worried about is if we weighed everything for the joint board meeting, we'll have this discussion, we won't make any decisions, and then it's going to get pushed back and pushed back and pushed back. I really think we need to. Because it will be a long process. I think we need to start sooner rather than later. I mean, we can make a final decision perhaps at that joint board meeting, but I don't think it should be the first discussion.
Oh, Debbie, I mean, can the trustees, you want to call a special meeting to discuss this topic?
Can you put it on your, your next agenda?
Yeah, I just asked, I just sent Chuck a text about it.
Okay.
If I may, however. Gosh, and I just sat here listening to you guys get nothing done.
Yeah.
So because we pay fifty percent and your board pays fifty percent. In reality, unless we all get together, get to, go into an executive session and hammer it out, or do it in the open, either way. We're not going to come to terms and agree on things. We need to get the old data that's already been put out there, what we used for the last manager, and see if any of it still fits. And what needs to be edited, ads, that sort of thing. I mean, that's all there, but you guys didn't get any, haven't gotten anything done here. So what makes you think that the trustees discussing among themselves are going to get anything more accomplished than all ten of us or nine of us talking together at one meeting?
Well, it was two people that want to do something right now and two people who don't.
I know. That's what I'm saying. So we need to do it all together in order to make, to come down to a resolution of, well, we do it right now or are we waiting to start? July one, essentially, if you have a June thirtieth joint board meeting where the actual final decision gets made, are we doing it effective July one? I'm more than happy to have a joint board meeting earlier than June thirtieth for that one particular item. We can do it an hour before our meeting next week if you want to do that, but that's up to you. I, I would agree to that in order to go, to start the process, which is going through a bunch of paperwork and trying to get people to make a decision about what process we're going to use to go forward.
Well, I think that's the first point of discussion. What process? In-house or, or the way we did it last time? So it sounds like in-house has some good potential.
Right. I understand that and I, I can agree with you.
And could possibly be faster.
But joint board, June thirtieth, or have a joint board sooner for the first wave so we can finalize it by the end. Either one, it's up to you.
Yes.
I think Debbie makes a good point. We need to get the background, at least if anything and if nothing else, at least the criteria that was used. So that we can get together at the joint board and either revise it, eliminate articles on there, so we can agree, to agree on what we're looking for for a manager.
So tomorrow I'll send both boards all of the material that I have via email to, so that they can start.
All we were doing today were trying to get some discussions started, what, what we're going to do. We're not trying to make a decision, at least I'm not.
Yep, me either. It's funny, I just don't want to delay.
We had said. You didn't like that.
Well, you know, we're, you're looking at what you're going to do with your highway department, whether, whether the, how you're going to. Put a highway superintendent in there. We're looking at the village side of police chief. Together, we're looking at. The situation that's going on all over the country as to what may happen. I mean, there's a lot of people that are out, they're out of work. Some of them aren't receiving the. Unemployment benefit, the six hundred additional dollars a week. So I can imagine we could be experiencing a revenue shortfall here in communications with other municipalities. There are some that are having problems already. And I think we need to, you know. Keep that in mind that we may have a revenue shortfall here. So in addition to everything else going on, I don't see at the moment the need to, let's figure out the committee, what we would do, but I mean. We've got somebody at the helm right now. Let's get through the issues that we're with that are currently going on, whether it be locally or statewide or countrywide. And then. Proceed from there. I mean, to bring somebody totally new in here. And, and I'm not endorsing or advocating, but to bring somebody totally new in here that has no idea what the expectations are or any, whether, whether they're from out of state or in-state or wherever. It's just going to make it more of a mix and more, more confusing, in my opinion.
So we've concluded that Shannon will gather some information tomorrow, send it to us. We would either have them meeting first one, perhaps an hour before their meeting next Tuesday. Right? To have our first discussion as a joint board or wait until June thirtieth to gather the full amount of information needed for. A more in-depth discussion with both boards.
Well, are we having a second meeting in June? I know that's the next part of the, the schedule. I mean, we could discuss it at our meeting amongst ourselves. I mean, I just, we need to have that information and start thinking about this and not show up at the thirtieth meeting and start the discussion. So if the trustees can discuss and then we discuss and then together. We have the discussion where we make the decision.
Kind of summarize where we're at and then we could move on. So that's good. If we meet, which we'll discuss in a minute, if we're meeting again in two weeks, they'll have the information and they'll discuss it and then we will meet together. Correct?
Correct.
Are we ready to move on to the second part?
Right on.
Yes.
Just an informational thing. So the sixteenth, whoever might have a meeting that night.
Oh, yeah.
Is an election, so that some of the trustees might not, yes, okay. So don't do a joint one that night again.
We wouldn't, yep.
Okay.
Got that, Sue?
Yeah, I got that.
Okay, so summer meeting schedule, eight, me.
Yep. In the past, we, I was done one meeting, started June, July and August, and then go back to two instead of starting with September. So I don't know what board wants to, I decided to throw it out there. I know everybody's going to say with this COVID thing, we've got to meet. I, I. Really don't, you know, unless there's an emergency here, some urgent decision needs to be made, there's no, I don't see a need for a second meeting, but that's just my opinion.
Kathleen with the sixteenth, that's elections, we're, we're all hands on deck. There's, that's going to be full out. So we're going to have highway, yeah, so I'm kind of agreeing with you on that. You need to put those two together.
I'm okay with going to the summer schedule right now. Our next regular meeting, well, we would need to ratify the Hyatt Hill.
Well, we can do that at joint board too.
When does that, is that timed?
Thirty.
Yeah, but aren't they wanting to save that project?
Yeah, we've already, we've already voted, we just got to ratify the vote.
So I'm okay and in, and in my opinion, it, you know, I was thinking about upcoming changes with recreation theater or opera, Opera House. I, I seem to be keeping pretty well informed with the daily email that we, I would hope. I don't see any pressing matters, but anyways, it's time to go to summer schedule as far as I'm concerned.
So we would go with a summer schedule of the first Tuesday of the month, unless there's a special meeting that's required otherwise. Correct?
Thank you.
All right, and so this would be our first Tuesday, June, and then we'd have it for July and August.
Right.
When's it? Meeting house, August?
I'm sorry, so you guys are going to do the.
And don't forget the, the September one generally is the one for the meeting house, so.
That's what I'm, I questioned. I just asked that question. I thought it was August.
Well, we moved it to August last year, I think, because of the darkness up there. It's dark and there's no lights there.
Okay. One, first Tuesday for select board, once a month.
First.
Summer schedule. June, July, August, September. Talk about after the meeting.
That's for everybody's planning and things. It just makes sense to get that all in the public.
Okay, Susan, hear all that?
I heard all that, yep.
Yeah, that's it for the agenda, so we will review agenda items for next meeting, which at this point would be. July seventh, unless we had a special meeting before. All that I had is ratify that, the vote.
Right.
Hyatt Hill. Quite possibly a manager search. You writing this down?
Yes.
Committee manager search discussion. That's the only thing I have.
Did you say ratify? But are you, can you do that at the joint?
Yeah, we can do it at the joint. It says if you read the.
Okay.
Read it, you can do it at a future meeting. Don't say which meeting you can do it at. Going. Select board action.
All right, so the only thing I have is the manager search discussion? So far?
I have nothing.
Yeah, look, we have a specific region, we have to ratify.
There will be financials and overtime and comp. Okay.
Review agenda items for the joint board meeting.
Personnel policy adoption.
Right, manager search and then the Bell's Falls Opera House. I understand it is a town function, but the joint boards. Would be interested in seeing how the Opera House is changing its operational model in this kind of post-pandemic environment.
Anything else right now? That's gone. Reviewing board's bells and warrants. Reviewing joint board's bells and warrants.
One, two, three, second.
Washington main signature to approve orders, bills and warrants, all those in favor, it's signified by saying aye.
Aye, aye, aye. The copies that need time, I have one copy here that most of them is wrong. And the one stated 528, Mr. Pedigno is lying, that's it.
Other business, Susan?
Yeah, I just want to, I mean, we haven't raised the concern that we got, all got from the listers. I know it was in the paper, but I think it's, I for one was very concerned as well about the timing of the dismissal of, of town hall staff before the end of the fiscal year in particular and with things we know that were supposed to be happening in June with the listers and their need to have Joni with Bruce even. He was scheduled to paint the, the meeting house in June and had some other projects lined up. And then now we have the elections for the village that Kathleen needs extra help for because she doesn't have Barb. So I'm, I'm just a little concerned about how that happened with the, the forced reductions without any input from the staff, I mean, from the staff particularly who needed their, their services, but also any, any heads up to the select board when there was some major changes happening to the budget that we were not even apprised of. So that's a concern that I have. And it's a little, I just don't quite understand the timing of it all and why it was so urgent to happen the first day of the interim manager's position.
We discussed that, Susan, do you want me to repeat that?
And I still don't understand the reason, but yes, if you want to go ahead, yep.
So we, we've had a building that's been shut down. We've done furloughs of highway and other departments, entire departments. There has been a criticism of those departments that town hall, even though the building shut down, we never changed a single thing. Rather than call it sudden, I would say it was past due that we needed to make some changes to our service model. We just do not have the foot traffic coming and going. And we've talked about that. Hopefully, each one of those staff people has a different program in place to transition out of the town. That will be with us for months to come in some cases. So we're not, you know, the decision that we made on June 1st will take a number of months to actually unfold. I think it was past due, probably the quickest way I can summarize this.
I still, I mean, you've said that many times and I still don't quite understand it when we have listers who sent us all a letter saying they need, needed those services, at least of Joan.
I have a perspective, working on that third floor for the last five years, I operated on that perspective. You and I have discussed that, that's something that I don't know if we're gonna agree with. The listers, for instance, they're taking over my office. Their service model is changing dramatically. The things that they did before, we're simply not gonna be replicating that. They will be close to the public, they will remain close to the public. So the meeting, the effort that we need for people to be greeted in the building, we're not seeing that right now. We haven't seen that in a couple of months and we needed to respond to that.
Well, I, I think this is a point we're not going to agree upon. I mean, there was more than just greeting happening by all of those staff members, but I just wanted to raise the point.
And in response to the part about the elections coming up, my understanding is that on the town elections, that member took the day off and wasn't there at all. Do you remember that? Just in reference to your comment about an election coming up. I remember that.
I, I.
Susan, you talked about Kathleen and what she needs. Kathleen is in the room, she can probably speak to her need and whether or not those are being met. We're working on a day, on a daily basis to make sure she is ready for the election. I don't see any shortfalls there. Our effort is, one of the reasons with the trustees meeting and the trustee election is really, I think it's a demonstration of what we need to do in November. So this is like a trial run for us. Kathleen, do you want to say anything? Do you feel like you're under resourced at this point?
No, I mean, everything's going because we didn't have your traffic. I was able to keep up with dog licenses and everything through mail. I don't know what it's gonna be like, you know? I mean, everything's going fine for the election. I think I'm already, I've put the word out, I need every man possible to help, but.
Just like down.
Yeah, a question about, um, it also didn't get raised in a, I don't know if it was raised earlier, but the, the stickers for the recycling center, people are now able to come in and get those, correct?
So we are going to mail the locals into, in with their tax bills and extend the expiration date to save on the mailing and also because a lot of people do not want a visitor to come in. The out of town stickers are being sold, counselor, finance office, police department. They can go to any of those locations and pick them up.
So they'll be extended past the July 30th, yeah, June 30th date?
This year, and then going forward, we have different colors for locals and non-residents. And so going forward, June 30th for anyone who needs to purchase a sticker. But this year, given everything that's going on, the easiest way to get the locals, all, all of the locals pay stickers, to send them in the tax bill. A mailing is about $1,600, so we just didn't want to do that right before we sent out tax bills.
We're gonna add police increasingly into the mix in terms of foot traffic for the customer, try to improve our accessibility to the average citizen, making sure that the police department is a place that they can go. And if they don't feel comfortable going into the town hall, they can always stop by the police department.
Anything else, Susan?
Other than I just wanted to thank Joan for her 28 plus years of service and Barb and Bruce as well, thank you.
Peter?
Uh, yeah, other business?
Yes.
Waypoint Center, I think Gary's here. I noticed the, he signed the waypoint application that was not approved by the select. Read the policy, that's how it works. He also said he was changing the policy because a fee was waived and you cannot change policy as a flip-flop set policy, if you remember Mr. Masuko's little tutorial.
First off, you're an error, I communicated that with you. It was changing the policy regarding having to go through the manager anytime somebody saw a problem on the roads or whatever. What would normally happen is you would call the manager, the manager would get to that person. The other issue.
I'll print it up, bring it up to your chat. What you wrote to me was, I'm changing the policy on the waypoint center.
No, you added two comments and I'm not even gonna argue about this.
I'm not gonna argue.
The second point is, so we.
Not the first area you made.
Okay, understood. The second area, I have Gary Fox with us because you were concerned about the $50 or the $500. You want to make sure we're taken care of. So you can address the question, we still give the form, the forms of the manager, insert, sign off on it. I didn't know what else to say to you. You had said that previous select boards did it this way, but it was right there in the form. So Gary's here for this reason.
Well, the form said that you can't waive the base fee.
That's the $50.
I gave you two scenarios. I told you you could do it because of COVID, you could take and charge them $50 a month instead of $50 per currency. That would cut them down to a hell of a lot less than $200 a month. You could also reduce it because now you're under a limitation of numbers that you can have down there to 25 people at 21 high. And I hope somebody's enforcing that because then you'd get them at $25 a month. So they're only down there for three months. And I would like to know why they, they're moving back down to the waypoint, just curiosity. Instead of at Hedy Green Park, they were hired at the waypoint when they got moved over there. So. Any other questions?
Gentlemen's been waiting.
I recognize, nothing here.
Sure. So, um, the farmer's market moved to Hedy Green because Bellas Farmers, Bellas Falls Farmer's Market failed at the waypoint center. A lot of that was an old personality conflict between some vendors, Walpole, some vendors in Bellas Falls. That is gone at this point and no one really remembers the details. But the, the issue is that when the Bellas Falls market closed and the Greater Falls Farmer's Market started up, people didn't want to come back to the waypoint because it had been the site of failed markets and none of the vendors wanted to be there. So the idea of walking around the community, talking to people, where would be people that have the market? They were excited about a new site going to Hedy Green. That was reason one, reason two is that the market is not a profitable venture. They're there to, for the farmers to have a direct to consumer outlet to get fresh, healthy local food to the residents. And frankly, I think the $600 a year they were paying to the waypoint is a part of what was putting them under. And the, the village offered to do the Hedy Green without cost. And we did talk to the chief of police at the time as well and had support for Hedy Green. At this point, Great River Co-op in Walpole has offered to co, co-produce the market with Sustainable Valley Group and help with the marketing, help bring all of the Walpole vendors back into the fold. They're excited to do two markets, to do two sites for that one market, to have one on Route 12 in Walpole at the Co-op, the future site of the Co-op, and one at the waypoint center. So they're, they're really ready to, to rejuvenate, to restart, to get behind the market. And the waypoint is really a better site for it, especially with COVID issues, having running water, a place to wash your hands, having electricity. The waypoint is well-designed for it, it's just that the, the market was kind of run out of there a little bit by some, some failures and some difficult financial times. And the, the manager was trying to help with that by waiving the fee at this point. And, and there had been in the policy, it offered, it said, no, the base fee was mandatory, but BIFTA was okay to, BIFTA could use it at no cost. And BIFTA supported the market, co-genders of the market. So it seemed like there was some leeway for the manager to play with that. But anyway, your, your, your point is well-taken, the strict letter of it is the base fee couldn't be waived and your offer of bringing it down to less because of COVID, COVID hardships, less people there is, is well-taken. I don't, does that answer all of your questions and concerns?
Yeah, then, I thank you for giving that information to us. The other thing, the only concern for bringing it up is that if they're using electricity in the bathrooms, town's gonna incur an expense. And here we've been talking about budgets and auction, cutting expenses here and there, and now we're taking that one on. And so that's why the fee is there.
So, so the building is not gonna be open, no one will be going into the building. It's possible at this point, it's possible that there will be live music where someone plugs in a microphone down the road, but I mean, that'll be, you know, pennies for a market. No one's gonna be going inside using any of the, the operating costs there.
We shut those exterior power outlets down.
Last year.
The bums resulting in the.
That was another concern.
So as your health officer out, anybody that gets, you know, more activity down there, gets the bums and drags moving on, it's important.
So bathrooms and all that will be open then or not?
So the, the outdoor bathroom
Right, yeah.
will be open. I think the, the running water is important for the market. The, the other point that the, the manager just brought up, it is, as we're looking to have the, the train station, the island develop, having traffic at the gateway there, the, the more traffic you have, the more, the more discourages activity that is unwelcome for a lot of residents and tourists. And, you know, having the, the farmer's market there, just like having Rockingham Health and Health really aids with all of that and the impression we have pulling onto the balance for the future. I think, I think all around, it's, it's, it's a good move for the market to go back there.
I don't have a problem with going back there, I just was asking, very obviously, why they moved from Hedy Green back down there. And again, I just reiterate that you just mentioned they may be using electricity now where the bathroom's outside. So in the past, evidently, I think I read somewhere where the town ended up cleaning up the mess that they, that was left at Hedy Green Park or the village did, I don't know who cleaned it up, but.
So.
Or maybe you did, I don't know, Gary.
Yeah, so, so at Hedy Green, the, the market was really good in cleaning up. What ended up happening, the chief laid discovered this, there were some, some people that were coming around and dumping stuff there after the market. The market was really good at cleaning up after itself. And I, I do, do want to thank you for asking that. I got to this meeting a little late because of some other things I was taking care of, but did want to have the opportunity to announce to people that the market will be opening June 10th and 12th at 4 o'clock, June 10th on Route 12 in Walpole, across from the Henry Diner, and then June, June 10th, June 12th at 4 o'clock at the week. Thank you for the questions, appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks. I don't know who this pertains to, but the light base, it's really like up there by the Model Press parking lot. There's a hole punched in the bottom of it, about four inches around and people are stuffing bricks and everything in there. There's a short catch, maybe put the rest of the legs out.
Say this again, streetlight?
Yeah, it's streetlight base at the Model Street parking lot, right across from the diner. It's the one right on, on the end, next to Robert McBride's little hovel there.
Would my policy change? If you see something like that, you just go straight to highway superintendent?
Yeah, but I don't know if it's a highway or whether, that's electrical situation, it may not involve highway.
Alright.
That's why I'm bringing it to you. I mean, you can designate for the highway if you want, but.
We'll look into it.
Okay, just I'm asking. Atkinson Street, where they put the sewer and are we gonna get that paid sometime before winter or are we just gonna have the bottles and the bumps there? I saw somebody, Scott Bowles, Tony Bowles, somebody in the town, but I didn't stop. I didn't know who it was, none of my business, but I just wondered.
Late last week I asked about it and he said it's the next week or so, they wanted compaction on that. But, and Andy and Everett seem to have it in, in check, but yes, we did.
Yeah, I was just asking, curious.
Good question.
You see it there, did you know along about, there was one on Green, Green Street 2, Sewer Break? I think it was the, the Museo Building right behind the Dairy Drive?
We're on top of that, we had the permit the same day. And yes, they were trying, that's in a similar state right now.
No, I don't know, I just noticed it was there from my, my watch. That's all I know.
I do, I just want, and I'm glad Gary could stuck around. I just want to inquire what's happening with the storefront, with the crew that came in? And can you bring us up the date on that?
Sure, so because the retails weren't allowed to be open, they requested to delay having a lease for a building they couldn't use. And at this point, they will be signing a lease by the one that you approved in January at the beginning of next week, including the, you know, the security deposits first and last, and fitting it up to move in for July 1st.
Super good, thank you.
I'd just like to say thanks to everyone who's been working here. I've noticed a tremendous amount of. Uh, I'd just like to say thanks to everyone who's been working here, and I've noticed a tremendous amount of things getting done. Um, I'm in favor of the policy or the agreement where if I notice something with previous management, I would have to ma, email or call the manager, who would then contact the department head, who would then contact the employee, and it might get dealt with in two weeks, so. When the water fountain was overflowing the other morning, I called, uh, Jonathan Beebe, fixed it in a like that. When the walk signal was cycling at Red Light Hill with no one in the thing, appeared to be a problem, got dealt with immediately, so. I'm in favor of, uh, things that make sense to, to fix problems, and I've just noticed the spirit of the people out there working seems, uh, quite positive, and I've noticed there's just a bunch of work getting done, so I'd like to thank everyone out there for their hard work. That's the only other business I have. Have any need for an executive session tonight? Pushman made a adjourn?
Second.
Made a second to do a adjourn, all of the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.